We want to welcome each of you to our school board meeting here and we thank you for your participation with us today. We will now bow our heads for a moment of silence. Let us stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unencumbered, in the liberal with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, do we have a form?
Mr. Vice Chair, we do have a form.
The media has been notified of the date, time, and place of this meeting. I need an approval for our consent agenda for tonight.
Mr. Vice Chair, I move that we approve tonight's consent agenda, April 28th, 2025.
Second.
Move by Ms. Gallow, second by Mr. Darby. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, you have the same rights. As have it, motion carried. Thought for today.
Education breeds confidence, confidence breeds hope, hope breeds peace. This is a simple but powerful reminder of the positive domino effect a good education can have on many aspects of a person's life and outlook.
Thank you, Mr. McKenzie, for such a thoughtful thought for today. We appreciate that. Public participation. The Board welcomes public participation at all board meetings. Please be reminded that all speakers' remarks must be limited to three minutes or less. Must be limited to three minutes or less. We ask that speakers be mindful that this is a business meeting and open to the public. The Board asks that speakers conduct themselves professionally and that their comments remain civil and courteous, bearing in mind that they will be heard by people of all ages. This is an opportunity for Williamsburg County residents, community members, parents' guidance, to address the Board about issues that serve the public interest and district mission. And the Board asks that the speakers demonstrate appropriate decorum. Do we have any? Thank you. Let us go back to the approval of our minutes for our last meeting.
I'm making a motion that we approve minutes for my last meeting.
Second.
Properly move it second that we approve our minutes from our last meeting. Do we have any questions or comments? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, you have the same rights. As have it, motion carried. Legislative, our update, Mr. Matt Burgess.
Mr. Vice Chair, I do not have a report to this time. There are several items that have not been approved yet and I didn't want to mislead anyone, so the next one I have a full report.
Thank you, Mr. Burgess. We'll move right along to our Healthy Learners presentation, Ms. Green and Ms. Newell.
Good evening. My name is Dee Newell and I'm the Program Manager for Healthy Learners, the PD region. And this is Merlethea Green. She is our Senior Student Service Coordinator for Georgetown County and Williamsburg County. We actually have a presentation done. For those of you who are not, I'm going to let you handle this. For those of you who are not aware of Healthy Learners, this is our third full year here in Williamsburg County. We began over thirty years ago in the Richland County area through their school district by identifying a school nurse who you see on the screen right now. She had a child who needed glasses and there were no resources for that child. And so with the help of an attorney at Nixon Pruitt, they began the first year, started the first year in Richland County. And since then, we have expanded to over seventeen counties across the state. As you can see, it was in nineteen eighty-nine and nineteen ninety-two. And then, like I said, three years ago, we actually came to Williamsburg County. A lot of what we do is through the help of the school nurses. So Jennifer Lamb and her nurses have been very crucial in our expansion here to Williamsburg County. But through the help of their screenings, the teacher may identify issues, but we work to get them served in the medical services as far as vision, dental, hearing, episodic, and counseling services. Since we started, I think, we go to the next one there. Yep, that was when we were speaking about the two hundred and forty-four schools that we were in in seventeen counties. And as you can see, we are in the red hot pink area. Georgetown and Williamsburg County is in that as well as Dillon, Marion, Marlboro, Chesterfield, and Darlington. And so we basically are across the state with our services and our information. Go ahead. Since two thousand and twenty-three, we are in seven schools here in Williamsburg County and we have served two hundred and forty-two students. Of those two hundred and forty-two students, there have been over eleven hundred barriers overcome with that. And that means, like I said, with vision, they may need glasses. They may have had a toothache and needed dental services through that. We have identified that there are a lot of dental services in this area. And that's not just here in Williamsburg, but across the state, we see that there is a great need for the dental services in students. Through those services, we've traveled over fifteen thousand miles, which is one reason we came into this area is because the limited resources. There's not a lot of providers who accept certain plans of Medicaid in this area. And so to help the parent navigate that, we work with local providers. But a lot of times, we have to end up traveling back to Georgetown or Lake City to get the services that they need. Since those three years, we have estimated our investment into the county and the school district has been over a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars just because the top service or the top group that we serve are usually Medicaid-eligible students. However, just kind of like what I said before, even though you have Medicaid, you might not be able to utilize that in certain areas. Pediatricians may not take Well... Well... Not Well... I'm talking about Well. Well, first choice is a really good one that we use a lot. But anyway, we have to navigate that and try to identify those providers. So a lot of times, the parent just does without or the child does without. One area that we stand apart and a lot of resources available is because we provide the transportation. And being in an area, rule again that there is a lot of transportation issues. So once the child is identified, we have a consent form that we get permission to provide those services. If the parent just wants help as far as care coordination to help identify a provider and get the appointment made, we will help with that. But probably ninety-eight percent of the services that we provide include transportation. A lot of times, they don't have a vehicle or they may only have one primary vehicle. They may have to choose between going to work and taking them to the doctor. So being a student and being able to be served by Healthy Learners, we are helping them to stay at work also for the issues with transportation, different things like that. And once we identify these kids, many times they go back for multiple services. So they may be identified through a vision screening, but after that, we realize, hey, they haven't been to a dentist in a while or they're complaining of a toothache or something like that. So usually, it ends up being the layered services. We try to meet them. We go to the next one. As you can see, this is our mission. We kind of talked about the spirit of Sisters of Charity, St. Augustine, devoted to removing children's health barriers to learning with love and compassion. And if you can go on down to where our model is, well, we talked about that as far as how they're identified and the road to healing. Yep. You can go on down probably to where we got the services. We'll talk about that. In this area, our highest number of referrals is through the vision services. We might have went past it, but that's okay. Vision and dental. And again, through the help of the nurses, we try to send out paperwork at the beginning of every year, but we have been able to get our consent forms on the website. So hopefully, a lot of families can go online and fill out this consent. They may not need it at that time, but once we receive it, it's good for the entire time they're in the school district. So if they ever come to the nurse's station or if the parent or someone comes in and says, you know, they need to go to counseling or we need to get their medications, but I don't have transportation for that, then this is a resource that the parent can fill out the information. And once we get that, we basically call them, hopefully, usually within a week, I would say, because there's no qualifications. We are a nonprofit and so what we do is, as long as there's a need or hardship, we're able to provide those services. And if it's something that we can't help with, we send them to some local or state resources, wherever we can help get them the need taken care of. But we are excited to be in Williamsburg. We're hoping to continue to grow. We hope to have a full-time staff member here. Merlethea is sharing this area with Colby. And so I think they kind of stagger it sometimes, so they're going back and forth between Georgetown and Williamsburg. And we have just had a great experience here. We have a lot of support through the principals and other staff and getting to know them. But we also know that there's a lot of need that is still in this area and people are not aware of this resource. And so any way that we can partner with you guys, like I said, we have our information on the website, but any kind of events. We try to participate in as many community events as we can. But obviously, word of mouth is the biggest thing, just to let people know that there is a resource available in this area that maybe could help them or their kids get the provider that they need. We do a lot of, like I said, medications and sometimes kids can't go to school if they don't have their medicine, if the nurse is not being able to give them medicine at school or whatever. So a lot of what we do is, once we establish that relationship with that student and parent, we work with the nurse and we make sure that that medication is there every month. We'll pick it up from the pharmacy and actually bring it to school. If they need a pair of replacement glasses, they email us or call us. And if they're eligible for a pair, we will get them a pair. However, being nonprofit, whatever is not covered by Medicaid or their private insurance, we will actually step in and help pay for that through agreements we have with providers. So there's really, you know, no reason why a child cannot continue to be in school and thrive. We know that a lot of people and a lot of kids that we find don't realize that they can't see well or they don't realize that their tooth is hurting because they're used to that. That unfortunately is their norm. So we have seen, I'm not sure if this is on the slide here, that once they become a student of Healthy Learners, that it has decreased their absenteeism from school and also increased testing scores as well as behavioral. So if there's issues with discipline and behavioral issues, then we have seen that just by getting the healthcare that they need, maybe it was counseling, maybe it was glasses, maybe that was the way they were acting out. But this has been a tremendous help to the students as well as the school district. But yeah, we are just excited to be here and again, we just want to kind of get the word out about Healthy Learners. We hope to be here for many years to come and we know that there's a lot of need in this area. So any way that we can identify and get to these children and the families, that's what we're looking for. Does anyone have any questions?
How are the kids identified?
Most of the time, what we do is through the screenings of the school nurses. So in certain districts, we actually assist them. We'll do the screenings. But here, Jennifer and the ladies, I don't know, she might have slipped out, but she's in the back. So once those children are identified, they send the information home to the parent and then our information is connected with that. So if they are interested in our services, so there's kind of like a cover letter to explain to them, hey, we have this resource available. If you're interested, this is their contact information, that kind of thing. Now, we can be, and some of our other areas, sometimes they're identified by the provider because a grandmother or family will come in and they're having trouble getting to those appointments or they're having, you know, a lot of missed appointments and different things and they'll say, you may be interested. So there's a lot of different avenues that we can be that get information as far as a child identified, but the top one is usually through the screenings of the school district. Now, that's not to say, a lot of times, the teachers, so we always want to make sure, and that's usually the area we focus on. We meet with the nurses. We try to do staff meetings and different things because the teachers are there with them all day. And so that's usually maybe the first person to pick up on a problem. But overall, the screenings is how we kind of do a blanket identification thing.
Dr. Williams.
I'd just like to thank Ms. Green and Ms. Newell and Healthy Learners for all that you do for the students of Williamsburg County Schools.
Thank you, and thank you for being so welcoming to us when we came in here and we have certainly appreciated and we hope this is a long partnership and that we can provide the needed services for your students.
Do we have any other questions?
How long has this program been in effect in Williamsburg?
In Williamsburg County, this is our third year. Yes, sir.
Do you have any questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Recognition of Early College Dual Enrollment Scholars, Mr. Nielsen Hilton, Director of Special Programs and School Counsel, Hilton.
Good evening to everyone, school board, Dr. Williams, everyone in attendance. Mrs. Darby James-Rahm made a song years ago that said, "I don't want nobody to give me nothing. You open the door, I give them myself." Back in spring of two thousand and twenty-three, Williamsburg County School District, with the help of Dr. Williams, came to me and we established first cohort for our early college program. And I'm glad to say that this year, class of two thousand and twenty-five, we have our first graduates of the early college program. The significance of that is that these students will graduate with sixty-one hours or more of college credits. I don't know if you know how big that is, but most of these students will walk in probably as a second semester sophomore or some will walk in as juniors. So somebody say, "That's amazing." Let's give him a hand. So these students have been taking dual enrollment courses, college courses, since the spring of two thousand and twenty-three and during the summer. And they're finishing up this year and I'm so proud and happy for them. The entire school district is and I'm sure the school board is as well. Just to give you a little example of how this kind of works is that for those who may not know, one three-hour course on the average is four hundred dollars per course, four hundred dollars per credit hour. So, Mr. Matt Burgess, you know, if you're taking one course in college, that one course could be twelve hundred dollars because each credit hour is given us a numerical amount. So you might take English one oh one, which is a three-hour course in college, that course might cost you twelve hundred dollars. These students have taken English one oh two, psychology. So you can do the math of sixty-one hours that these students have saved their family as far as from a financial standpoint. So at this time, I don't know if you want to take pictures or not, but I'm going to ask Dr. Williams if you would come down, please, and we want to hand out, I'm going to call these students' names. We will give them their certificates and I'm going to call them name by name because they deserve it. So students, when I call your name, if you'll come down, and Dr. Williams will hand you your certificate. First, we have Ms. Lauren Darby. Ms. Ciara Fleming. Ms. Kayla Fulton. Ms. Adriana Green. Ms. Caleb McLaughlin. Ms. Kennedy Hinderhand. Ms. Candace Montgomery. And this person I'm about to announce as well, he's not actually part of the early college program per se, but he's been in dual enrollment forever and he went the extra mile. He's also earned his associate's degree. And just so you know, for all those that are bulldogs like me, it makes my heart proud for this young man, Mr. Malcolm Salters, because recently he received, he has a full ride to Psycholife State University. This is the catch. With him getting his associate's, there's a good chance that he may be able to graduate in four years with his doctorate, possibly his master's. The Clapbone Scholarship, full ride, it covers his books, tuition, everything, and their mom, so. I'm very proud of him and I know me and Brother Burgess and Brother Matt, we could be on top of him to make sure he does the right thing. He get to college too. But Mr. Malcolm Salters. At this time, we have the board members come down and take a picture with these. Time to be recognized. Job well done and congratulations. Any questions from the board? Thank y'all so much.
Thank you, Mr. Hilton for, I'm sorry.
I'd just like to thank Mr. Hilton again for all his work, parents, students, and the administration and staff at Williamsburg Tech for assisting these young people and doing an excellent job.
Let's give them another hand, amen. Thank you, Mr. Hilton, and this young scholars, parents, grandparents, and all of you who are involved, thank you so much. We now have recognition of newly certified teachers by Dr. Maureen Davis, Executive Director of Public Relations.
Good evening to our school board, Dr. Williams, to those in attendance. Going to defer to Ms. Angela Fred since she works directly with these individuals.
Thank you. Last board meeting, guys, we gave a huge round of applause to our special ed teachers, right? And in her absence, I knew that there would be one young lady that would be coming. She's not here this evening, but I would like to give a commendation to Ms. Kamika C. Ward Nettles from the St. Mark Community who has also passed a praxis in special education. So I didn't want to, you know, leave her out, but she has been successful. But tonight, we are going to look to our K-five group of educators that have just been phenomenal for us. And before they even come up, I'm asking the board to please give them a huge round of applause. I want to give a very brief summation because I think sometimes if we are old like me and we did this test some years ago, we may not realize the enormity of how things have changed. So for our K-two folks, it's still one test for the content along with the PLT that I work with them with, my company does. But guys, for three-five, it is now four separate tests and the PLT. So they have to pass a very involved English test, a very involved social studies, math, and science. It doesn't look typically like what you would have seen on an elementary test some years ago. So as these young people come forward, know that they have done a lot of hard work. They're in their alternative certification programs, which means, Mr. Burgess, they're certified. I hear you. I hear you and we work towards what we hear the board members ask. Mr. Darby, we hear you. So with that being said, we are going to call the young folks to come forward and Ms. Belinda Mack because she directly supervises these young folks.
First, from Greeleville Steam Academy, we have Ms. Tawanna Bright. Early childhood education. Next, Greeleville Steam Academy, Tyler Ricks, elementary, all four parts. From W.M. Anderson Primary School, we have Sarah Thompson, early childhood. Chastity Carolina, early childhood. Alicia Brand, early childhood. Victoria McFadden, early childhood. Taquia Thompson, early childhood. Stephanie Brown, early childhood. Next, from Hemingway Elementary School. And also to ask the principals to accompany your teachers. Hemingway Elementary School, Desmond Collington, early childhood. Randy Gamble, early childhood. Jasmine Graham, early childhood. Novette Stewart, early childhood. Sasha Werner, elementary, all four parts. Next school is Kenneth Gardner Leadership Academy. We have Lironda Avant, early childhood. Rashonda Mitchell, elementary. Allegra Reed, early childhood. Elania McFadden, elementary. Alana McFadden, elementary. C.E. Murray, middle school. Roxy Cowser, early childhood. And India Fleming, early childhood. Let's give all our teachers a great round of applause. School board, if you'd like to be in the picture, you can stand behind them. It'd be fine. Thank you. Let's give them another great round of applause.
We want to thank you, Dr. Davis, and those involved with these newly certified teachers. We want to congratulate all newly certified teachers. We want you to know that we are all concerned and that we're pulling and want the best for our students, all of the board members, each and every one of them. So congratulations to all of you. Dr. Staggers will now go over our twenty-five, twenty-six year calendar. This will be an action item.
Thank you, everyone. Williamsburg County School Board, Dr. Williams. I'm here today to ask for recommendations and approval for our two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six Williamsburg County School District Modified School Calendar. Williamsburg County School District is pleased to announce the adoption of the modified year-round calendar for the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six school year. The South Carolina Code of Laws, Title fifty-nine, Chapter one, Section fifty-nine, one dash forty, twenty-five outlines the South Carolina School District requirements for all school districts. And these requirements are as follows. School terms must equal one hundred and ninety days annually. One hundred and eighty of those days must be instructional based. The calendar must cover at least nine months. School districts cannot start the school year before the third Monday in August. This provision is in way for districts to elect to implement a modified year-round school calendar, which we are in our second year of doing so. There are ten staff development, professional development days and they must be broken down using the following categories. Three of these days must be used for collegiate professional development based upon educational standards as required by Section fifty-nine dash eighteen, three hundred. The professional development must address at minimum academic achievement standards, including strengthening teachers' knowledge of content areas, teaching techniques, and assessments. And on the calendar, they are represented and coded as the color yellow and pink. No more than two days must be used for preparation of the opening of school. The remaining five days may be used for teaching planning, academic plans, and parent conferences. In addition, three school makeup days must be built into the calendar for bad weather. Williamsburg County School District is now identified as an e-learning district, Williamsburg County School District is now identified as an e-learning district, which allow us to use e-learning on inclement weather days. However, we are still required to schedule the three inclement weather days in our academic calendars. And if you look in your packets, your calendars, those inclement weather days are coded in the color gray. Per Section fifty-nine dash one dash three seventy, all public schools shall be closed on Election Day in November for each even number year. We don't have an even number year this current year, so we have to come in on Election Day. In order to seek the input and perception of our stakeholders, we conducted a modified calendar survey, and here are the results as follows. Williamsburg County School District administrated a survey to gather feedback on the modified calendar for the upcoming school year. The survey window was April eighth through April seventeen. The survey shared through three forms, district website, parent power school emails, and all staff emails. The calendar varied in the following manner, and it is noted during the sessions for intercession week. Intercessions are coded currently in the color baby blue on your calendar, in your packet, as October the sixth, two thousand and twenty-five, through October tenth, two thousand and twenty-five. There are two options reflected upon the calendar for the second intercession week. Calendar A, A noted that February the sixteenth through the twentieth of two thousand and twenty-six, and calendar B reflects March ninth through the thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-six. We also included a drop-down menu that categorized three categories, which are administrators, teachers, classified staff, and parents. We also shared on our district website, using a QR code, and also a professional development link, so that they can have access from handheld devices as well as digital tablets or notebooks. Here are the results of our survey. We had two hundred and sixty-one participants to respond to our survey. Our findings reveal the following: Forty-nine point four percent of participants that took the survey were teachers, thirty-six percent were classified staff, thirteen point four percent were administrators, and one point two percent of parents completed the survey, as shown here on the graph. We posed the question, which calendar do you prefer? We had two hundred and sixty-one responses for calendar A, which is coded in the color blue. We have fifty-nine point eight percent participants voted for calendar A, and forty point two percent voted for calendar B. And so therefore, we are now seeking recommendations for approval of the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six utilizing calendar A. Are there any questions?
Are there any questions? Yes, ma'am.
Vice Chair, at this, I knew that we adopt calendar A.
Second?
We have a choice. That's what you're asking?
We have, either calendar A or...
Does we have a choice between A and B? That's what, that's what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
I just read on the survey that calendar A was the favorite.
Was the favorite among all stakeholders.
I have a question, Vice Chair. Uh, it has to be the second year.
Go ahead.
It has to be the second year.
Second.
Okay, moving proper to second, that we approved calendar A, you said?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments?
Yes, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I noticed that there's only one point two percent of parents completed the survey. What were the formats that the survey was presented to parents?
It was presented through our power school emails, database for all parents to have direct access to the survey, also the district website as well, to ensure that parents got, versus putting on social media, we could not control who would be able to take the survey, so it was emailed directly to parents.
Any other questions, comments? You have another question? Any other question coming? All in favor of the approval of calendar A, let it be known by raising your right hand. Those opposed, you have the same rights, ayes have it. Motion carried.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for the presentation of our calendar for the new year. Executive session, pursuant to Section thirty dash four, that's ten of the South Carolina Code of Law of nineteen seventy-six. As amended, the board needs to hold an executive session. No form of action or voting will be taken during the executive session. We are going to conduct a session for personnel, ma'am. Can I have a motion to go into service session?
I made a motion that the Vice Chair, Dick, board goes to...
Move by Mr. Darby.
Second.
Second by Mr. Burgess. Any questions? All in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Both, you have the same rights, ayes have it.